Thanks everyone for joining, especially the candidates for the school committee. Tonight, we're having the candidate forum. The format will be, there will be a three-minute introduction from each of the candidate. And then we're going through the questions and answers section. We do have some prepared questions. And we'll also take questions from the audience. We will most likely mingle the questions a little bit. With the prepared questions and the questions from the audience. The the crush, the introductions, we are planning to go from the order of the last name. The reverse last name, just to kind of mix it up from what the League of Women Voters, League of Women Voters might do. And from the prepared and the questions from the audience, we will alternate. We will start with, based on the alphabetic last name order, but the second person who answers the first question will be the first person on the second question and so forth. So that's going to be the format that we are going to go with. My name is Shirley. I'm moderating the event based on on behalf of Asian American Civic Engagement Alliance. We are a local nonprofit that promotes civil engagement with the community. So thanks everyone for being here. Okay, so let's start with self-introductions. Yen Shin, we'll start with you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
My name is Yen Shin Schmidt. I would like to serve the community as a member of the Acton-Boxborough School Committee. Community support is critical to maintaining the excellent educational services that are provided to EB students. Since 2018, I started volunteering for the school district as a parent volunteer. I have interactions with students, educators, and parents and guardians. Those interactions help me understand the needs of our students as well as the challenges our educators and districts' families face today. Currently, I coach two youth soccer teams and serve as a vice president for Boston Area Youth Soccer, known as BAYES, where I work on policies and budgets as well as providing match support for fifty-two recreational youth soccer clubs in the greater Boston area. I will work to support the needs of all students in the district, create robust communication between the community and the school committee, and be mindful of the tax burden that is shouldered by Acton residents. Thank you for having me here.
Thanks. So we'll move on to Leela. I can share the slide that she sent. Leela?
Hi, everyone. My name is Leela Ramachandran. I'm one of the candidates for school committee. Thank you for having me today. I actually have used this forum in the past to kind of evaluate school committee candidates. So thank you for hosting this this evening. I kind of start with talking about my family. My grandmother was an educator and then a principal. My mom is in the country because of education, and so this has always been kind of a strong value for our family. I attended the district K to twelve. Both really coasted through school and then really struggled after a brain injury. And so I kind of saw the two different experiences that students can have in the district. I went on to mentor youth and also tutor them, especially in science and math, because I've heard far too often that kids just feel like they're bad at math. And so I really appreciated the opportunity to kind of support them in developing skills to get better. In college, I studied public health. I also got a certificate in civic engagement and public service. I think policy is really important when we create societies and systems that are really equitable and serve folks well. And so through my experiences, I ended up doing research and evaluation in public health. So what that really means is that I am used to looking at a lot of data and then incorporating perspective from community members to then say, this is what we're hearing, this is what's important, and have that kind of inform the policymaking process often. I really enjoyed being able to kind of chat with community members throughout this process. I've been involved in town, and so I was on the town committee. I've also kind of been mentoring Acton-Boxborough youth. And I think Dr. Kong and I were recognized the same year in the town last year for our service in Acton. And so it's been really fun to be part of this community for a couple decades. And I would love to serve on the school committee. Again, I've loved kind of chatting with community members, and so I hope that folks will reach out if they have any questions, and I look forward to the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Leela. Mike? Mike?
Got on mute, sorry. Hi, my name is Mike Gowing, and I'm running for one of the three seats. Currently vacated in the Acton Regional School Committee, and I'd like to ask for your vote. Education has long been a priority for Acton. We've routinely placed in the top ten statewide by any metric. Now faced with declining enrollment and increasing costs, we are quickly approaching a financial choice that won't be easy. Three-quarters of the taxpayers don't have children in the school system, but overwhelmingly supported and override to fund the new twin school because they believe in a good educational system as a community value. They saw an already high tax rate climb higher. We have to use our tax dollars wisely. This all sits atop a pandemic that saw a significant drop in MCAS test scores and many mental health issues for both teachers and students. We need to explore some creative ways to reverse this problem and get things back on track. We need a gap analysis to determine the best way forward in making up our lost time. The teaching staff and administration have worked for long and hard to produce students that will go out into the world and thrive. I believe in them and I want to support their efforts. I've served in many town positions in my twenty years here, from being on the Council on Aging to serving successfully for two terms on the Select Board to my current role as President of Acton TV. Whether it's Rotary, the Marine Corps, elected office, or helping seniors, service has always been in my nature. Thirty-plus years in business management and finance and a background in municipal finance helped me understand the mechanics necessary to do this job. Again, I appreciate your vote.
Thanks, Mike. Jason?
Hello and Happy Easter. I hope you all enjoyed some family time today and were able to get outside on this beautiful spring day. So I've lived in Acton for over twenty-two years. My wife and I have four kids, Jason, Grace, Helen, and Faith. And they're in tenth, eighth, sixth, and fourth grade. My wife Holly has worked at Douglas Elementary for the last three years. I'm very familiar with the school district at many different levels. I've had the opportunity to work with these kids in town through different activities such as coaching baseball and soccer through Boy Scouts and through volunteering with the youth group through our church. In addition, I've run enrichment programs at Douglas. I'm running for school committee because, while I value our school district very much and think it is an amazing resource for our kids, I feel there is a disconnect lately between our school and our community. Having the four kids in the schools at various levels has given me a real appreciation for the complexities and challenges facing this district. I'm inspired by all these challenges that we have in town. Some examples of these are how to adapt to all the changing demographics. The diversity is very exciting, but there's a wide range of educational needs. Some kids are learning English as a second language, while some are working with advanced AI concepts and winning national-level science competitions. Another challenge is the increasing incidence of Haze-based activities. We need to figure out what is at the basis of this and how do we address them? And of course, we have a budget crisis that Mike mentioned. We've had many positions being eliminated over the last two years. And how do we work to prevent this from continuing? Successfully overcoming these and other challenges can be defined in many different ways, and I think it's an interesting but worthy and attainable goal for which our schools should strive. I think it's critical that the school community and committee work with the superintendent and administration to set clear and actionable goals, but they seek input from the community in doing this. I think the conversation around what is happening with de-leveling lately is a perfect example. It's unclear why the school is making these changes and what it hopes to accomplish, and most importantly, how it will accomplish these goals. With this lack of direction comes a lack of confidence, as many people concern that their kids' education is not what they expect it should be. I consider myself a critical thinker. I'm able to weigh information objectively and come to fair conclusions. I think these are skills valuable to a school committee committed to facing all these challenges, while still keeping education as the forefront as a goal of the education system here in Acton. This is why I'm asking for your vote on April twenty-fifth.
Thanks, Jason. Next is Tori. I will share this intro of Terry. Go ahead, Terry.
Super. Thank you, Shirley. And thank you, everyone, for hosting us. As I think you realize by now, this is a really great group of candidates, and we're having some really great conversations. So in 2018, I remember sitting outside Subway at Kelly's Corner, and I was talking to my husband whether we wanted to move to Acton. We graduated from West Point together. We'd served over twenty years as Army officers. We'd seen a lot of the US and a lot of the world. We were both language majors. We studied French, Russian, German, Arabic. And we'd lived all over the place, worked side by side with people from different backgrounds, every state in the US, all over the place. And we valued diversity in our community. And the only thing we knew of Acton was my husband's cousins having graduated here in the nineties, and it was a very different town. It was predominantly Caucasian, mostly kind of upper-middle class. And so we were wondering, and then school let out, and we're sitting there outside that subway, and the kids are walking by, and suddenly we just looked at each other and we're like, this is it. This is what we're looking for. There's plenty of diversity here, and so we made Acton our home. I learned to value diversity of thought during my time in the Army, but I also learned it takes a lot of skill to create an environment in which those thoughts get shared. We have to seek people out rather than just expecting them to come to us. Words matter. Sometimes we have to sit together and write the words together to come up with words that mean the same thing for everyone involved. We have to be willing to recognize our own biases. We all have them. And sometimes we need to take a break and refocus when things get tough. But mutual respect is critical, and there's never a place for hate speech or discrimination. We have to work together. I'm running for school committee because I've always had a passion for education, and I will fight for every student to have the opportunity to achieve their own best potential. There are many pathways to such achievement. My own kids have taken courses ranging from small group special ed to AP Math and Science. In scouting, I see kids from across our community push themselves and achieve more than they imagine possible because they're supported and encouraged. This is the environment I want to see in our schools. I'm also a teacher. I have two master's degrees in education, one in the science of learning and the other in the intersection of policy, practice, and research. And so this spring, when the terms of all three educators on the school committee end, we're going to have a gap in expertise. As an education professional, I can help fill that gap, and you can look to me to help interpret education-specific language, approaches, and issues in school committee business. I also have decades of experience with policy and budget. I wrote my first policy when I was twenty-two years old. At the Pentagon, my most impactful policy completely changed how the Army operated. As a school committee member, I would draw on information such as census data, chapter seventy formulas, assessments, student, district, community, family feedback to fully understand facts, perspectives, and possibilities. I would focus on areas where data and anecdotal experiences appear to diverge or where people draw different conclusions looking at the very same information. Some might see those as obstacles, but to me, they represent opportunities to clearly identify the challenge to be addressed and to find common ground upon which to move forward. I'm excited about this. I'm strong in diversity in thought and expertise in education, and I hope you'll vote for me on April twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thanks, Tori. Next, Courtney.
Yeah, I think she called your name.
Yeah. For my flyer. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight and for this to be put together as an opportunity for us to share where we're coming from and our desire to be part of such a large aspect of our community. I have been a part of this community my whole life. My parents grew up here and both graduated from the high school. I grew up here and graduated from the high school, and I now have children in the district and one who is not yet in kindergarten, but will be soon. So I feel very invested in our community and would love an opportunity to be a part of serving it as it's served me so well for so long. I recently spent a few years as a classroom assistant in an elementary school in district, so I also feel that my perspective as a parent and a recent employee is very well-rounded and offers a lot that is important for what is needed in our district right now. I have recently started a community group called Communities Choosing Childhood, as you can see on my campaign flyer, and that has a goal of bringing together our community to serve our children and to be a space for people to, families to come together and have the support of each other and know that we're all in it together. There are many bridges that need effort and time to be rebuilt, especially after the pandemic, and I firmly believe in rolling up my sleeves and doing the hard work to rebuild them. On top of my community group, I also volunteer my time to run a before-school play club at my children's elementary school and our before-school running club. On top of that, I'm working with the Acton Recreation Department to get a community-wide play club going so that we have a time and a place that all members of our community, especially focused around our children, can come together and just share some time and some thoughts and create friendships and get together and be our village because we all do need the village. I would be excited to be part of school committee to collaborate on these really important long-term matters that come into play, and I also would like to be a voice for some of the immediate things that really need attention to help better the mental health of our children and our educators. So I would love to be a part of it, and I hope for your vote.
Thanks, Courtney.
Thank you.
So our self-introduction section is complete. I will go around with the questions. We have some prepared questions. And we'll also take questions from the audience. If you have questions you want to ask, put in the chat. Let's start with the first question. Recently, the East Hampton School Committee rescinded its offer for a superintendent finalist. According to boson.com, the decision hinged on the finalist's use of ladies. In an email he sent to committee chairperson Cynthia over contract negotiations, according to the finalist, Chairperson Kowinski, I probably butchered the name, said using ladies was a microaggression, and the fact that he didn't know, didn't know that as an educator was a problem. If you were on the school committee facing the situation, how would you vote? To keep or to rescind the offer and why? We'll start the answers from Courtney.
I'm going to be that obnoxious candidate. I am a very visual learner, not so great at auditory. Would you mind repeating it for me, please?
Yeah, sure. No problem. It's a little bit long. Recently, the East Hampton School Committee rescinded its offer for a superintendent finalist. According to boson.com, the decision hinged on the finalist's use of ladies in an email he sent to committee chairperson Cynthia Kowinski over contract negotiations. According to the finalist, Chairperson Kowinski said using ladies was a microaggression, and the fact that he didn't know that as an educator was a problem. If you were on the school committee facing that situation, how would you vote? To keep or to rescind the offer and why?
Thank you so much. That was really helpful. I don't tend to just jump into an answer. I feel like with many situations, it, I can see both sides or all sides, and I don't think I could give a quick, yes, I agree with rescinding, or no, I don't. I think that there would be a lot of necessary conversation to have. It's why the thought of being a part of a committee of so many committed people is what attracts me to school committee as well is, it's not as simple as just saying yea or nay. It's about talking it out, looking at the big picture and all parts of it. So sorry if that's a non-answer, but I'm not willing to jump one way or the other.
Yeah, sure. Tori?
So when I was in the Army, and starting in the nineties, the proper way to start a meeting addressing a group of officers was gentlemen. Now, I might mention, I am not a gentleman, although I got pretty good at being one there for quite some time. And when I met a German officer, and he was surprised that I was there as the only woman in the group, and he invited everybody to come that evening to meet each other, and he made a point of getting to know me. And the next morning, when he came in and he addressed the room, all full of officers, all men except me, and he said, gentlemen, and then he stopped and he searched the room, and he made eye contact with me, and he said, and a lady? I didn't take offense, even though it felt strange to be called a lady when wearing a uniform because I recognized he was trying to be inclusive. So I guess my response to this is I would want to have a conversation with the superintendent, one, to know why he titled his email that way, and two, to make sure that he also understands that things are different. I teach health class to students who see themselves as gendered and non-binary and transgendered and gendered terms that have been honorifics in the past may not necessarily be seen that way. And so I don't think it's a simple matter of a yes or no. I think it's a conversation to know what he meant. And then to see if he's open to understanding that some people might have not read that email perhaps in the way that he intended. And if he couldn't see that, then well, I probably would have rescinded the offer as well. But if he could see it and saw a way forward and to be able to address it with the community, I'd be willing to continue.
Thanks, Tori. Jason?
Yeah, so if I'm allowed to like add more information from the articles and this whole story, it seems like there was more information, right? So this wasn't the one incident, right? So he had a pattern of sort of conflict with the school, the committee, and they had some, already had some misgivings about hiring him. So you know, and then what happened was there was a big protest or demonstration in favor of him. So this is one of those situations that I think a school committee, you know, handled very poorly and was disconnected from their community. That being said, obviously, this candidate, I don't, I forget his name, I'm sorry. He could have handled himself much better, and I do sort of think he should have known if he, in this day and age with education, he could have used the women, called them by their, you know, their names, and it would have been much easier. So I don't have all the facts. So it's, it's, I can't say one way or the other whether or not I would have rescinded the the contract, right? But it is a perfect example of challenges that we're going to be facing as a school committee and how to handle them in a way that is cooperative with the community and in touch. And we also have to like make sure that we're using situations like this as teaching, as teaching moments, not only for our administrations, but for our students.
Thanks, Jason. Mike?
I suspect that there's much more to the story than what we see in the, in the news. Unfortunately, we've become a society of bullet points or, or you know, I guess, taglines and that kind of thing. I suspect that there was, this was a split vote to begin with, a four-to-three vote to offer him the job. And I think that there was probably some misgivings or second thoughts. And when that was brought up, it may have been the tipping point, but I think that we'd have to, if it was coming before our school committee, for example, I think that we'd have to have a discussion that would identify exactly what his, his strong points and weak points were in terms of why we would hire him. The fact that he was the acting superintendent may have made him more familiar than he should have been in the circumstances. If he had stepped back and just been a candidate instead of the acting superintendent, who was a candidate for the permanent position. So he fell to that misgiving or that misstep, misinterpretation. And I think that that may have been enough to just do him in, but I think I would have to know much more about the background before I would change vote or vote to approve, so.
Thanks, Mike. Leela?
Yeah, thank you. I, it's funny you mention this because I was having this conversation earlier this week. And if I've learned anything about being involved in town government, and I think just government generally, it's that there's often far more two stories than actually the information that makes it public. So I think part of my approach, if I was a school committee member, would be to gather as much information as possible. And then I think generally my approach is that there should be an opportunity for learning. I think this is similar to what Tori might have said. But I think that we should be modeling behavior and responses to issues that might come up, the same way that we want educators to approach our students and the same that we want students to approach each other and anyone else. So really, it could be an opportunity to educate that person and say, hey, this is how it was interpreted here out, kind of their perspective and why they might have said that. And then gone from there. I think that if given explanations and given more context, that person was unwilling to kind of change and evolve, then maybe that's a conversation about are they the best person to be in this role, given that they're unwilling to change? Because I think that especially for our district, like we want people who are willing to honor and respect a diversity of opinion, but also kind of lived experience. We have a fair number of people of color in our district, folks who are immigrants, LGBTQ folks, and so if we have people in leadership who are not willing to respect that, then I think that we can have a conversation about dismissing them. And generally, just I think it's an opportunity to model behavior. When, when children do something that might not be ideal, I don't think it's appropriate for us to just kind of kick them out of class because they, they might have said something that felt a little bit disruptive. And so I would like us to approach situations the same way that we would like our, our school and our communities to approach these situations. So I apologize that I can't say yes or no, but I would like more information before making that determination.
Thanks, Leela. Yen Shin?
Hi. Thank you for the question, and also thank you, Jason and Mike, for filling in the background information surrounding it. My answer to that is that yes, I will vote no on the offer. I will rescind the offer. Not on the grounds of him calling the chairperson ladies, but on the grounds that he, I don't think the candidate has an idea of boundaries. The school committee is the governing body of the schools, and the chairperson, if you Google it, you would know. You usually addressed, if it's a she, you address her with madam chairperson. Simply ladies, coming off from a superintendent candidate who hasn't even become the superintendent yet, I don't think that will be a good thing. I don't think that's a good start for a working relationship from school committee and superintendent relationship perspective. So sorry, I will be the bad person for this question. I will rescind the offer.
Thank you all for the candid answers. So now question number two. In a recent Wellesley Town Meeting, an amendment to reduce the school budget by two million was presented. In defending the school budget, the school committee chair stated that schools aren't designed to be maximally efficient. They are designed to be schools aren't designed to be maximally efficient. They are designed to be maximally impactful. Do you agree or disagree with that underlying governing philosophy? If you agree, what is the maximal impactful objective or area acts in Boxborough District should be focused on? And how do we propose to measure the success of such an effort? It's um, it's a loaded question, I guess. Do, do you guys get the question or you prefer me to repeat it?
If you repeat it, it gives us a little more time to think. It is a great question.
Okay, sure. In a recent Wellesley Town Meeting, an amendment to reduce the school budget by two million was presented. In defending the school budget, the school committee chair stated that schools aren't designed to be maximally efficient. They are designed to be maximally impactful. Do you agree or disagree with that underlying governing philosophy? If you agree, what is the maximal impactful objective or area acts in Boxborough School District should be focused on? And how do we propose to measure the success of such an offer? We will start with Tori for this question.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, so um, I think you all heard me say in my intro that I deeply believe that schools should enable our kids to reach their maximum potential, whatever, whatever that is for them. So I pretty much fall into that maximally impactful camp. I don't believe it is at the cost of being efficient, but I do believe that when I look at the two of those things and the balance, if I've got an opportunity to be hugely impactful and it might be a little less efficient, but we can still figure out how to do it within the budget, I'm going to lean towards impactful. Right now, my assessment is that our focus needs to be on making sure that we are supporting the losses that we've had throughout the past three years, COVID and post-COVID. I can see that there are a lot of measures the district is looking at. Um, we've seen them put up test scores and um, some of the I-ready scores and the tracking of how students are doing. I think that's a good piece of it. I think the other piece of it is that we need to be hearing the stories from families. Because numbers don't tell you the full story on how students are doing in recovering learning. It also has to be with what that impact is on them and how they see their own potential. We want kids to come out of our district going, I am strong in these areas and I am going to go forth and do mighty things. We don't want them to reach the point that they're applying for college. And they undershoot because they've lost faith in themselves and they don't believe that they can recover from the challenges that they've experienced. Um, I think I answered all of that. We got agree and disagree. We got impactful, objective. We got, how are we going to measure it? Oh, growth. I absolutely believe that we need to measure growth of students. So where they are now and where they've gone over the course of the year. That's how we're going to know, along with family feedback.
Thanks, Tori. Um, Jason?
Um, yeah, so I'm sort of scratching my head, why the if, uh, at the Wellesley, the Wellesley's, um, the comment from the administration in Wellesley to say that the school is not designed to be efficient as a justification to cut the budget doesn't, that's, I'm having trouble reconciling that. Why? That would mean that they're trying to be more efficient, but it's not, I don't know. So that, the, the question, that doesn't line up for me. So I'm not really sure what they're trying to accomplish by saying this, but I do think that's true, right? The public, public schools are not supposed to be super efficient, right? Um, we, the kids, the kids have downtime at school, right? And that downtime is used for other things. It's used for uh extracurricular things. Um, we could be studying very specific academic endeavors all day for a- and, and the kids would burn out, right? They need some free time. They need times to explore with their friends, to explore different interests, right? They, they may want to take a shop class instead of uh another science class or another language class, right? So I think we, we have, we have to let the kids sort of drive what, what their experience is going to be, right? And, and how it impacts each kid is different. Um, but we do want to, we want to create an environment where the, where every kid can be successful, right? So every kid has an opportunity to do and experience school as they want to experience it in a way that they are getting an education that prepares them for life after, life after school, whether that's a vocation immediately or if it's secondary education. That's, that, that's what the school is for, designed for.
Thanks, Jason. Mike?
You just call my name?
Yeah, Mike, you're next.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure. Um, yeah, I'm, I, in the case of Wellesley, um, they're a wealthy town and um I'm sure that there were both sides of this argument that were thoroughly vetted. I'm, I'm not sure that I agree with the impactful versus efficient because you strive to be both efficient and effective. I mean, that's, that's really the goal. And and when you're striving to do that, you have to um make considerations for all players involved. Uh, we may have to spend more money in areas that we didn't anticipate spending. Could be, you know, state mandates, could be D E S E mandates that we had in planned, in which case then we have to figure out a way to, to um fund it and make it happen. The, the, it does not remove the necessity of being more efficient. You want to use dollars wisely. You want the best education for all the kids coming through the system. You want them to be able to, as I said earlier, thrive in life after coming through uh K through twelve at A B. So it's, it, it's a difficult question, but I think if the answer is really in the granularity, not in the big picture. So uh, I don't, I, I guess my easy answer is I, I don't necessarily agree. It's an either or. I think it's a, it's a combination of the two.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Leela?
Thank you. I think that there is a both and approach. Um, when we scope projects at work or when I'm consulting, we often think about how do we do research in public health that is most impactful while also being fiscally responsible and also just kind of realistic. Um, and I think that there is not a one-size-fits-all approach to education. And so that might be the most fiscally efficient. Um, but I don't think that it makes the most sense for education generally and especially our community. And so I think that there's an opportunity to think about how we look at success. We bo- both want students to achieve academically um, and kind of make up some of that lost time. And then also think about success more holistically. Our district is going to be looking at Portrait of a Graduate, which is something that other districts have done already. That kind of says, hey, these are the characteristics that we think a graduate from our district should have. And then how can we go back and kind of support those um going forward? So for example, um, some of the work that I do right now is around surveying students and empathy is one of the, the characteristics of a portrait of a graduate for another district. And so we've really thought about how can we ask questions to assess empathy? Um, and then see if that's changing over time. And that's only a piece of Portrait of a Graduate, but I think that that might be an opportunity um for our district in Acton and Boxborough to say, yes, we value academic achievement and how else can we support students who love to learn, who are, are good people, um, and who have some self-confidence to go out in the world and do the things that they like to do. Um, so I think that there, there's a both and approach. And I think that generally there's often a both and approach to a lot of the issues that will come up um for the school committee. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Leela. Um, Yashin?
Hi, thank you. Um, so I think this, what happened in Wellesley kind of rings a bell. I believe the very amendment was presented at the town meeting last year in Acton. Um, a proposal to reduce the school budget. Uh, the amendment eventually failed. Um, so the school budget passed. So we did not hear from the school committee to defend the budget. So I think Jason, that was the chairperson from Wellesley School Committee was trying to defend the budget after the memo was presented and saying like, we want to cut the budget by two million dollars. That makes any sense for you. Um, so yes, I agree that um, schools are supposed to be maximally, maximally impactful. And they're not only just impactful for the students who are attending the schools, but also the community that um supports the schools. And I think for Acton Boxborough School District, we have a lot of resources in this district. We have people coming from all over the world with their heritage, their culture, their religion. They have a lot to give to this community. And in turn, that s- success of our schools and the success of our students can look very different because how diverse our community is. What I think that Acton Boxborough School District should be focused on is to utilize the resource we have, because I know when I was co-chair of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Family Advisory Group, many parents, guardians, caregivers have offered their assistance to the school district. Be it, you know, to connect alumnis to current students. Um, just to show you that there is life after high school, you, you'll be fine because we were there and we made it. There are people who offer to help um students because they know that the counselors in the schools are overworked. They were generously offering guidance on college admission essays, process, how to walk through uh the FISA package, which my understanding was that whole service package would be ten thousand dollars if you were to pay for it. There are people, family members who, community members who generously offer those help. I think that if we can, the school can look into, connect the students who are currently attending the school and the community that surrounds the schools in order for all the students to succeed, that, in my opinion, will be a success for our district. Thank you.
Thanks, Yashin. Um, Courtney?
Thank you. Um, man, it's hard to go last. I'm going to be a little repetitive, I'm sure. Um, as Has Been said, I disagree with the general statement. I don't think that being maximally efficient and maximally impactful are mutually exclusive. It can certainly be hopefully a lot of both and not just a little bit of both. Um, I believe that the maximally impactful objective that hopefully all school districts are focusing on, especially in this day and age, is life after the district. Much as that's how I look at my parenting, right? How are my children going to thrive and succeed when I'm not determining their bedtime anymore? How are our students going to thrive and succeed when they're not inside our classrooms anymore? The data coming from colleges about how ill-prepared freshmen are to handle life outside of their growing up nest in their district is really scary to me. And that's where I would like to see a lot of efforts put, is how can we help our children succeed? Because success is going to look different for everybody. But success means being able to handle and make choices and end up content and safe at the end of your day. And that, that measurement really comes from, again, I'm being repetitive, that community outreach and hearing from people and learning from people and being there for each other to see what that looks like for each and every one of us.
Thanks, Courtney. That concludes our second question. Um, third question. What do you think should be the decision-making process related to important curriculum changes such as de-leveling? What are the roles the school committee should play in curriculum decisions? What's your opinion on science class delivering being proposed? Um, I'll repeat it. What should be the decision-making process related to important curriculum changes such as de-leveling? What are the roles the school committee should play in curriculum decisions? What's your opinion on science class delivering, de-leveling being proposed? We'll start with Jason.
Okay, so what the decision process I think should be, um, I think, yeah. Uh, for me, a- as I would see this go, is that if the school administration identifies a problem, then they would come to this, they, they would come up with some sort of solution, right? They, they have a goal. This is the problem. This is what we want to do to, to resolve this issue or address this issue. And this is how we're going to do it, right? And then, then they would bring that to the uh, the school committee. And they, they, this is part of the policy decision, right? And then the, the school committee, they'd work with the school committee. What do you think about this? The school committee would then seek input from the community. And this is, I think, is key. We have to be, uh, the school committee would have to be very vocal and very visible about getting that, not just minutes on a webpage that nobody looks at, right? Especially if it's a hu- a big thing like de-leveling, right? Um, this is a huge, huge concern. And the community feels like it was just slipped in, right? And, and with, without any engagement from the community, which is why it's, I think, caused such consternation. So, and then once the community has weighed in on it, then we, and, and I would say we have to get uh, we have to give the community uh multiple ways, depending on, on how big of a policy a change it is, right? We, we have to let the community be able to weigh in multiple ways, not just that, maybe, maybe not just at the school committee meetings, but once the school, once community informations come in, then the school committee can work with the administration. But I think and this, what I think what we're missing is we need to set some goals and we need to set some um uh, ways of attaining those goals. They need to be measurable and what is our, what is our, and, and, and look like, right? Um, how do I feel about science specifically? Um, I I'm, I guess I'll, I'll say I'm concerned, right? I have a 10th grader who's beyond this. And then I have an eighth grader that's going to go in and she's going to take AP or Science next year. Um, it's a stretch, but she's come to us and said, I want to try this. Um, I think I'm concerned that, that the work level may be a bit much for her, but um, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that she's going to rise to the challenge. Um, it, I think it's going to be a, an awakening for her, let's put it that way, for uh, uh freshmen at high school uh to take a science level. Um, so I, I, I'm optimistic that it will work out, but I am concerned that, um, that having only really two levels is it's going to be, it's just not enough differentiation. So we're going to have, we're going to have some problems, but we'll, we have to, we're going to have to find out. We're going to find out one way or the other. So thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Mike?
Mr. I would say, Lily, if you want to post these up in chat, it does make it a lot easier if you can actually see the question written, but not to put pressure on you, Lily, but thank you. Um, I think that um in the, in this latest spate we went through with the leveling question and the presentation that was done, um, I'm not sure that the um, the superintendent was very clear as to what the benefit or, or um, what, what the objective was in trying to do this. Um, I, I know that they talked about um, more inclusionary practices, meaning everyone gets to, to uh go along or come along with the process to, to, to uh improve the slowest or, or those who have um um, learning issues or whatever it might be. But I don't think that we should be looking at this from a standpoint of how do we lower the standard so that everybody can, can win? I think what we should do is we should keep the standard as high as reasonably possible and then identify the people who need the help and give them the help to bring them up to it. Because as somebody said earlier, we really want to make sure that when they leave this environment, when, when they leave A B and go on to college or, or life or the military or whatever it might be, that they have a well-rounded education, that they understand the subject matter, that they can hold their own. Now, my experience i- in the past has been seniors leaving uh A B and going on to colleges, um, four-year colleges have been surprised that A B was harder than the first year college. So it's AB was harder than the first year college, so it's something that I think. It is a high standard and we should be keeping a high standard. I think that that's the best we can do for all of the children is. Uh, push them to to achieve as much as they possibly can. And then identify areas where those that need help in order to get there, get that help, so.
Thanks, Mike. Um, Lila?
Thanks, Shirley, for this question. Um, I think that. Decision-making processes around curriculum change are are tough. So I spoke to Superintendent Light about this, and I think that. Curriculum is is a gray area around who is the decision-maker, who's being informed about this. I mean, so I think that there is additional kind of clarification that could happen around role definition. Um, in terms of making pro- making decisions about about uh curriculum. I think that I, so I agree that it should be community-informed and engaged. Um, this is something that. We strive to do in public health rather than making decisions. Uh, for communities, saying kind of what do community want? Um, how can we support that? I think in this case, I'm kind of going back and forth between honoring the expertise of educators to know best practices for education and pedagogy that work. Um, especially for our students. And I I hear the concerns and I appreciate that families are are concerned about their students' education. Um, and really invested in that process. And from what I understand, after speaking with uh, other teachers. Um, it seems like other districts have been doing this for a little while, and so I hope that we are looking to other districts to see what. What has worked, what hasn't, um, so that we aren't reinventing the wheel in in that sense. I I don't agree with the idea about lowering the standard. I I don't think that that's what's happening here and. I don't think anyone is aiming for that. Um, I think that all students are capable of achieving, and sometimes when we have the tracking and the leveling. Students may get stuck on this kind of lowest path and never have the opportunities to challenge themselves. Um. And then I think in terms of rollout, the scaffolding piece that educators have been talking about is really important, so. When you have more mixed classrooms, are there opportunities for students who are doing well and naturally. Naturally succeeding um, to be challenged and continue learning? And then on the kind of other end of that, for students who do need more support, is that, is that available? Um, are they getting what they need? So I think that there are a lot of, there are a lot of things to consider. Um, and I hope that that process with community continues so that there's constant communication about what's working, what's not, so that we can keep. Kind of developing new iterations that are working the best for our students and our educators.
Thanks, Lila. Yeah, she?
Thank you. Um, so, three layers. First of all, the first question, what do I think the decision-making process should be? Well, I don't have a child in junior high or high school. I have two children in elementary school. I had no idea that was going on until my friend who has kids in all three schools. Told me, hey, do you know they're de-leveling the science classes? They're de-leveling all the classes. I think that for a decision that's going to impact students, many classes of students to come. To leave the elementary school parents, caregivers, families out of the conversation is irresponsible. Um, what are the roles the school committee should play in curriculum decisions? I understand there are great areas of the curriculum changes because the school committee only adopts or approves major changes for curriculum. And or textbooks. De-leveling doesn't, isn't really a curriculum change, nor is it really a textbook adoption. However, the school committee has two responsibilities. One is to uphold. Um, the state standards that you must, that you must make sure that the public school um. Follows the state standards. At the same time, the school committee, local school committee has to respond to local needs. What are our students and teachers need? What is um, are, I guess, what? What's special to our community? What's special to our own students? Even though the school committee may not have preview over whether or not you should be de-leveling the classes or not. I think that conversation the school committee certainly should have with the administration, like, because they represent the community. Um, lastly, what do I think about science leveling, de-leveling? I have a um Bachelor of Science degree in medical technology. And I remember when I first came to United States, I transferred here as a ba- uh, as a undergrad. And I went to, you know, registers for chemistry classes, and I said, you know, can I just take a test so you can allow me? Into the three level, the the three hundred level chemistry classes? And the department head of chemistry department looked me straight and I said, no. You need to start from the one hundred level classes and demonstrate that you are able to absorb the information. That you are ready for a higher, higher level course. Otherwise, you will fail and I would have failed you. So that being said, if that's this, that's what's happening in the college level courses. I don't see why, you know, we can't have this conversation with administration, like. You are going to put all the, y- you're going to de-level the science. But did those students have the prerequisite to enter a higher level science class? Are they ready? Or do you just want them to find out in the middle of the course and have to drop out? And I think what I heard from my friends who have children in high school right now. What happened was the, one of the classes started with thirty students enrolled in the AP Science, uh, Environmental Science. Halfway through the year, there were eighteen students left. The rest of the students dropped out. Sure, they were allowed to take that class, but they also had to drop it. Is that the best thing for them to do in? In AB High? I don't think so. So I think. School committee should have conversations with administration. And reveal those, like, we de-level the science class. How did it go this year? Can we do something to improve it? Is it not working? Can we, if it's not working, why are we still continuing on this path? Even though um, I know a lot of districts are doing it. I know this is, we're not piloting this de-leveling. But I think as a parent. I don't, I can't speak for all parents, but I can speak for myself. I think my worst fear is that my child or my children become the guinea pigs of someone else's failed experiment. And I would. Uh, if I get elected, I won't, I will not let that happen to our community.
Thanks, Jason. Courtney?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is, these are great questions. Lots of food for thought tonight. Um, as far as the decision-making process for curriculum changes, I mean, it's involved. There are a lot of stakeholders there. There are a lot of aspects to all the decisions. Um, and the role for the school committee, um, I really see it as a platform for all the voices, right? We're obviously getting information straight from the administrators and the superintendent. I also hope that teacher voices would have a huge role. Um, these are the people that we're trusting and respecting in these roles in the day-to-day with our children in our community. Um, that's who I'd really love to talk to about the de-leveling, because when I first learned of this and. Um, tried to absorb some information, my first thought was, how different would this feel for the teacher? To have a classroom of students across all levels. And needing to meet all of their needs instead of. Classes at at a level where it was a little more concentrated. Um. I also don't have children in the high school as of yet. We are very close to junior high years, which is strange to say. Um, but I agree, elementary parents need to be just as aware of what's going on, and I see that role in the school committee as well of. Um, communicating, taking on information, and making sure that everybody who is a part of this. Has a time and a chance to share their thoughts so that the best decisions can be made.
Thanks, Courtney. Tori?
Curriculum. I love curriculum. But here's the thing, if elected to the school committee, uh, my focus would be budget and policy. And I think as hard as this is at a moment when there's a lot of frustration in the community. This is squarely in the superintendent's role. That's what we hire the superintendent to do. So it's important to have the school committee be sort of the um. The censors out into the community to be able to understand if. The direction that the superintendent is going is meeting a lot of concern, is meeting a lot of resistance, and that's where I see a school committee role. But as for making specific curriculum decisions, I don't think that's something that the school committee does. We hold the superintendent accountable and we listen to the community. So this is a really interesting question for me for a number of reasons. Um, number one, my student perspective on it is that I have, as I mentioned, I have a. A student who takes some very small group special ed classes. Science is one of his inclusion classes. He takes a CP science class, and I also have a student who has taken. Every AP class offered to include AP Environmental Science, and so I'm going to offer this thing, this bit of food for thought. We're all assuming that those kids who left AP Environmental Science left because they couldn't handle the class. I know of at least one who was bored. So we need to ask ourselves, what's the story behind those numbers? Why did those kids choose to change classes? Where did they go? And what's their opinion of their new class? So a- as as hard as it is to hear things like that, we need to know the why behind it. Um, the second thing I'd say is that I don't think that the presentation of the de-leveling. Went particularly well. Um, listening to it as a teacher, there was a lot of teacher speak. And a lot of assumption that everybody in the audience had familiarity with some terminology and perhaps even some research that. Isn't a fair assumption. Um, there's actually a lot of research out there about. What happens when you make highly leveled classes versus what happens when you have a variety of different types of students in a class together. And I'll offer as an example to illustrate this, uh, one of my history courses at West Point. I had freshmen, um, I had them first semester when they were just coming from high school. And generally, when you go through and you grade your tests and you run all your grades, your average is usually right around eighty percent. That was kind of the expectation. So we got through the first round of exams and I had this class that was way out of the norm. And I was very curious as to what was going on, so I started looking into who was in the class. And I discovered pretty quickly, I had five of thirteen students who were in the top fifty in their class. So, okay, those individuals are skewing the average, but here's the crazy thing. The kids who were on the bottom of the class by the end of the semester were excelling. And they came back and said, you know what? I didn't do very well in history last time, but suddenly I can figure this out. The kids they were with caused them to achieve at a higher level. It didn't happen in any of my other sections. That group was fascinating. So. There is certainly a lot of research in that direction. Here's the other piece. The students who understand a topic really well. End up understanding it even better because when they get into small group work and they start explaining concepts to other students. You learn something much better when you do a little bit of teaching, and so as they work together. It ends up being better for everybody. It's worth looking at the research there, and I wish they'd presented more of that. I think it's really critical, though, that teachers must be trained to be able to support this, and this is where I see the school committee having a role back to. Budget and policy. You've got to make sure that teachers have the professional development to handle that varied uh, a classroom. Especially if they're not used to doing that. Um, I teach in a school where every single class I teach is like this. It is multi-grade, it is multi-level, it is multi-ability. It is multi-fun. Wonderful things can happen there, but it is certainly not easy. That said, I know the superintendent started when he came in with unit, uh, universal design for learning, another term worth looking up. Um, the basic premise is that you give kids lots of different ways to show what they know. So they pick that thing that they are fascinated in, and they study it really hard, and they can come back and they can demonstrate their knowledge in all sorts of ways. There's actually huge potential in this whole idea for students to really go beyond their potential as they're seeing it right now. Because we're no longer constraining expectations. You know what happens to the kids in the CP classes? No one ever asks them if they want to be in AE or AP. They just assume that that's where they want to be. And it's really frustrating. I ha- know of a kid who wanted to move up a level in a foreign language class. And so they ended up writing to their teacher in the language that they were studying. To ask if they could be in a higher level next year, and the teacher just suddenly realized, oh, my gosh, I never asked. We can't have a situation where expectations are lowered. We need to expect the most out of all of our students and see them rise to the occasion. So I think this is worth another look. I think it is worth a lot more community engagement. And I think the uh, the whole idea has to be sold. Much more effectively in a way that is understandable to everyone, or we're not going to be behind it and it isn't going to succeed.
Thanks, Tori. Uh, Lily, are there questions from the chat that uh, you you would like to ask?
Yeah, yeah, there are a few questions coming from the chat room. First, just since I have the stage, let me just say I'm totally, totally impressed by every one of you, all six of you. One thing I think everybody love acting, it's so diverse, and you can clearly tell from the candidate we have today, you know, all diverse background. Diverse strengths, you know, um, career paths. Development areas, you know, i- it's just amazing. So thank you for running this, okay? Uh, one of the question I got from the audience is, what do you think? Are the top major challenges that AB schools are facing right now? And a bonus question will be, how do you plan to tackle that? All right, Mike, I will post a question in the chat room for you.
We'll start with Mike. He may not have time to read it.
I didn't read it the last time either, so I'd already answered. It's all right, I can do things on the fly. Um, I think that uh, we have. Uh, two challenges, two major challenges, I think, uh, going forward. The first is that the pandemic really set us back. Um, and as the heroic effort that the. Uh, school system did to try to educate kids when we couldn't get them in classes. And the hybrid classes and all of the things that that happened as a result of COVID. Um, nonetheless, has. Put us back and and we need to figure out uh, some new and creative ways of overcoming that. And I think that's going to be identifying areas where we need help for individuals and then providing that. That moves directly into the part two, uh, which is, well, how do you finance that? Because generally, when you're talking about additional services or uh, more staff or whatever it might be. There's, there's the funding issue that goes along with that, and. I guess I want to say that I would look at the efficiency, going back a few questions to what we were talking about at Wellesley. To make sure that we're spending the money on the things that matter. Um, to the community and their children who are, who are going through the schools. Uh, to make sure that uh, when each student leaves, that they feel well-equipped. Um, just as an aside, one of the things that I did, I actually taught a class in the, at the high school. Um, when I was more active in Rotary. Um, I would run the reality fair, which was, we had the entire tenth grade, five hundred students that would come through. Uh, we would get together eighty volunteers to to staff tables and and we would have them. Base their salary on whatever they um, whatever their chosen profession was, say, coming out of college. And they'd get a monthly budget, and then what they had to do was they had to demonstrate that they could manage that budget, that they could do housing and. And transportation and insurance and food and all of the things that all us, that bores all of us adults. Um, and many of the kids really had um, a comeuppance. Uh, they were well-educated in in what the school does, but. They weren't necessarily, they didn't understand how how credit works or how a checkbook works or. Things that are going to be functionally necessary to go out into the real world. So we used to put the time into it and and I did that for five years until COVID shut that down, but uh. But it's something that uh, I think was very, very. Useful uh, and identified areas where kids needed help, so. So that's what I think we need to do, identify the the areas where kids need help and fund it accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Lila?
Big questions. Um, I think generally, the top concerns fall into three buckets, which would be budget kind of learning, especially after the height of the pandemic, and then kind of transparency and communication. Um, related to budget, I think that's all been made pretty clear if you've been kind of keeping up with with how the school committee has has been making decisions um, and what's happened at town meeting. I think externally, we can look to grants from from a various um, sources and then also kind of advocate for state aid. Um, whether that means that the formulas changed or that we kind of get additional somehow. I think that that relationship with our legislators is important and I I have relationships with all of the legislators that represent um, Acton and Boxboro, and I hope that we can continue those relationships. Um, in terms of learning, I coming out of the height of the pandemic, like, that's significant. Um, and we are seeing that students who are two to three grade levels behind um, are disproportionately students with disabilities. They are multi-language learners. Um, they might be low-income students or any kind of intersection of those identities. And so additionally, also, mental health has been significant challenge. Um, we see this statewide, we see this across the nation. But it's, we have responsibility to address and act. And then I think that the Cartwheel Care Initiative of the schools kind of partnered with an organization named Cartwheel Care. I mean, that's been great for expedite expediting mental health care um, for our students. So thinking about creative ways like that, um, and then related to transparent communication, I I don't, I think that there are significant uh, proportion of our community who has no idea what's happening in the schools. Um, they feel disenfranchised, even if they know what's happening in the schools. And so I really do want people to know what's happening. I want people to know that their input is valued. Um, and so I think there's a piece about seeking the information, sharing information, um, and then reporting back to folks who are sharing their input. So that they feel like they're being listened to and like that's being in uh, kind of taken into consideration as we're making decisions. I think generally I come kind of from a systems level thinking. So if we see repeated problems, how can we look kind of higher level to address those so that they don't keep happening or that kind of holes don't keep needing to be plugged? Um, and I'm generally committed to making myself available to community members so that people can reach out if they have concerns or questions or want to know what DESI means because we use an acronym in a meeting and it doesn't make any sense. Um, and I've started that process. I look forward to continuing it. And I I I think there's, there's a lot of good work that's been done um, and a lot of good work that can be done.
Thanks, Lila. Um, Yan Xin?
Thank you. Oh, wow. Um. I think that AB's top challenge is also, in fact, our greatest strength. It's the extremely diverse community that we have. When you have people coming from different culture, religious, hereditary backgrounds, different ways of life, you know, there's always that you come together and you're like, well, you're different. Why? I think and then you have a conversation and you're understanding, okay, well, we have a lot more in common than different because we're after all human beings, right? Um, the past several years hasn't been easy on anyone. I think that comes to answer this question, the top challenge that AB schools are facing is how to reconcile an extremely diverse community with diverse thoughts. After everybody has suffered varying degrees of losses. Students lost instruction time. Seniors, some of them lost their friends. I mean, not seniors, sorry, like a lot of people lost their friends, their family members. Um, children, little children growing up over the past couple of years, I think they've only seen people with eyes and without their facial expression. So that was a loss of interaction. Now that we come out of the pandemic, we sit down and have a conversation to say we are so different. Do we have anything in common? Can we work together? But on what? I think to address that challenge, the my idea is to ex- to communicate with the community that we can agree on one thing, we're in Acton. We, because we love this town and we're here to support the students in the schools because this is what we are known for. Like when we first moved here um, in twenty eighteen, I think when I was driving in Acton Boxboro for Meals on Wheels and every senior that I've spoken to said, oh, you know, welcome to Acton or Boxboro. We have great schools here. You have children. You're gonna love it. To re-center everybody's frustration over how different we are back to we're here for the kids. Our children are going to receive a good education here. We're going to make sure of that. Is my way of tackle that impossible challenge. So I hope you guys will hold me to it.
Thanks, Yan Xin. Courtney?
Um, I think that at the very least, one of our top challenges is one that many districts are facing and it's this idea that COVID set us back. In my opinion, COVID didn't set us back. It changed where we are. And with that comes the challenge of where is that balance between the state education requirements, which have not changed and the present state of our students and our teachers that has changed. Um, nervous systems are tired. And you can't just go full steam ahead and catch up these students because we were set back. We have to meet everybody where we are and figure out what that looks like and how that challenge gets covered. I mean, I certainly have thoughts I would love to bring to school committee about how to do that. I there is lots of community outreach, teacher outreach, admin outreach that needs to happen with that. We're not set back. We're in a different place.
Thanks, Courtney. Tori?
So this, again, I coming at the end, you feel like it's all already been said. I I love what you all have shared. Yan Xin, especially talking about diversity is both both something that can be a challenge and also a great strength. And I'm also an eternal optimist, so I agree absolutely with what you said and with what Lila said about I think it being important for school committee members to be part of that outreach, be part of what gives everybody a chance to feel like they can be heard to be part of the people who are knocking on doors um, when when people feel like sometimes you don't feel like your your voice is wanted until somebody says, I want to know what you think about that. I think that's really important. As I think about all of this as well, on the budget side, I see the need for probably a multi-year campaign plan. Um, we are making plenty of cuts within the district and we need to be tracking the cuts that we've made, the dollars saved, and also the impact on everybody involved. And at some point in time, that conversation is going to come forward again to figure out where do we go further because as you look at both inflation and also um, personnel costs, they're both pushing really hard against proposition two and a half, which limits the amount that we can tax. So we're going to have to figure out what to do about that and whether that is a conversation we have just with an Acton or again, as Lila mentioned, something we need to talk to state representatives about. Um, I've been looking really hard at the chapter seventy formulas for uh, English learners and I think Acton probably has a much stronger need there than many similar communities. We don't have the depths of reserves that, say, a Wellesley has. You know, when we talked about them earlier, their their property taxes are can bring incredible additional revenue in that that Acton just can't even begin to equal. Um, but our diversity is important and we want to build a strong community where we can all communicate with each other. So we have to figure out how to do that. Um, if we can figure out a way to make the state aid be more effective for us, we should. And if we can lobby our state representatives to help change the formula in a way that that helps our town, I think that's really important. Probably the other thing I think about as, you know, what's a top challenge? I think it's a stress level across the district. Um, it's students, it's families, it's teachers. Um, I hear about interactions that tell me teachers are probably stressed out and and not not giving their best response sometimes to a student's question. Um, I hear students who are on the other end of an interaction like that and they they come out feeling like they're not capable, like there's no hope, like they can't go forward. And I tell you what, if you've ever heard a kid speaking the language of depression and started thinking about suicide prevention, that is a scary moment. I've had twenty-five years of suicide prevention training every six months of my life. It's something that when I hear it in in scouts or I hear it in students or I hear it in family members, I'm going to act on and and it's a scary thing. We shouldn't be in that place. So knowing that there are kids who are struggling, knowing there are teachers who are struggling, knowing that there's just full-on stress on the system is hard. And the best idea I have to tackle that is that we have to take a very careful look at what the most important things are to do. And we should do those well. And we should not try to do everything. But we need to figure out what our priorities are and do them well and be focused and celebrate that success and have a good feedback loop so that, just like any innovative business, we're looking at ourselves and we're making updates as we go. We can do these things. It's the same conversation I'm having at my little school with fifty students. We have to stop trying to do everything and we have to focus on the things that will be most impactful, most meaningful and can make, help make our kids the most successful.
Thanks, sorry. Jason?
Yeah, so I I think it's um, w- we have a problem with confidence in the schools right now, and I think that's because we don't have a good idea of exactly what's going on and we don't have good community engagement. Um, and I think with with more community engagement, if we can get more communication out to our parents and we can get them, our parents feel more confident that this kids, the the school's doing what the school is supposed to be doing and what it's advertising is, it it does just to educate our children, then I think the confidence will come. And when the confidence comes, then all the other sort of things will fall fall in line, right? If a budget override is needed, um, and I'm not advocating for that, but if if one's needed, i- if we have confidence in the school, we'll we'll pass it, right? We'll we'll figure it out as a community. Um, if if other things are needed, if if deleveling conversation is happening and we have confidence in our teachers and then we'll we'll feel good about it, right? If we know what's going on and we have confident that the school is going in a direction which we expect and that's which we want, then then the other things fall into place. So I I think it's a pretty clear uh, community engagement problem. And once we get that communication solved, and then the other other stuff will come into play.
Thanks, Jason. Um, Lily, do you want to pick another question from the um, chat?
You're on mute, Lily.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can't. We have actually a very active um, question chat going on. We have maybe three or four questions.
I think we can only take one more question.
Okay, I'll randomly pick one who is in the top of the queue. I think this one is also dear in everyone's heart too. It's about safety in school. So given the proliferation of school shootings and overall gun violence across the country, uh, where does the responsibility for for protecting the safety of our students, of teacher, the community and over overall um, um, Acton Boxboro in general? So.
Um, I know Mike and Yan Xin uh, uh, need to leave, so I I'll call them first. Um, Mike, you want to respond first?
Sure. Uh, for one, I think that we um, we have to continue with Alice training. And for those that aren't aware of what Alice training is, it's how to respond to an active shooter situation in our schools. And that's unfortunate that we have to do that. Um, but but it's for the safety of the students. Um, and we also need to ensure that our buildings are locked down so that um, other players than students and teachers are not roaming the building. They have to have the opportunity to defend themselves, basically. I I don't there's a panacea to this problem. I don't think there's an easy solution. I think it's going to be a lot of little things that we do. Um, one important feature is going to be maintaining uh, efforts to keep our pulse, keep our finger on the pulse of what is going on with the students. If we have students that are demonstrating um, characteristics that we feel are troubling or concerning, then we need to step up as a community and we need to close that gap and and make sure that they get the attention that they need. Um, because in in almost all of the incidents that have happened, it's someone coming in who basically doesn't feel like the schools took care of them or might be and they they want to seek revenge. Um, you know, mental health, as I mentioned much earlier, is a is a problem as a result of the pandemic and that some people grew very introspective during the pandemic and the uh, and the cessation of having community discussions and face-to-face discussions. And that that has driven them to places, some dark places that we need to be aware of. So I think there has to be uh, a combination of training, uh, lockdown, control the buildings that we have and keep an, keep an eye on what's going on with the mental health of the the students in our building.
Thanks, Mike. Yan Xin?
Thank you, Shirley. Um, I will stay till the end, but thank you for, thank you, Ovi. Um, so personal experience, my children's elementary school um, experienced a shelter in place just a few weeks ago. It was a really scary for me to get that email as a parent. Uh, and also, it was very interesting after pickup, when my children came home, what they said was that what they have observed as little eight-year-olds and ten-year-olds that they saw the police officers charge into the schools. And then they were asked to go back into the building to shelter in place, which I'm like, why? Um, but to ask, to answer that question, that I think the responsibility for protecting the safety of our students and our overall community actually falls on all of us. Um, I think as a parent that and as a coach, sometimes I I hear children casually talk about, you know, guns and weapons, et cetera, killings in from, you know, video games, TVs and or books they read or just internet, TikTok. And I think every time I'm sort of make a big deal out of it and and speak to them about it, these things are not to be taken or spoken casually. These are serious. I know you haven't, I know you haven't seen it. I really truly wish that you never will. But the seriousness of it needs to be stressed um, from all levels is, you know, from between parents to children, family to between family and children, between students and teachers and between communities and and the schools. Um, right now, I know that, so I worked on the school and police relationships when I was co-chairing the DI family advisory group. And I know that our district puts a lot of emphasis on building continuing to build a good, positive working relationship with the Acton Police Department, not only just for, you know, having them coming to the schools and to respond to incidents, but at the same time having them coming to the schools to educate the students. Now, I I know that relationship isn't perfect and sometimes we get really disappointed, but knowing that both sides are trying, that we're working towards a better relationship. I think for me as a parent, it gives me some kind of security, like, okay, they're right there. They love the kids, you know, in theory. Um, and they will respond accordingly. And honestly, pray for their safety, which I do all the time. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's my, what I can think of.
Thanks, Yan Xin. Um, Lila?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, I'm reflecting on the fact that I have been in in educational setting where there's been an active shooter. Um, and it was terrifying. And and we deserve better than that. Um.
And and we deserve better than that. Um. I have policy experience at both the state level, but also at an institutional level, um, at an institution of higher ed. And it was primarily related to sexual violence. Um, and these conversations frequently led to there are holes and there are failures in federal policy. Um, so I think that there is a community response, there is a legislation response. Um, I think that primarily kind of within our school committee role, there's there's a policy piece and there's a funding piece. Um. We have a responsibility to develop and then support policies that are going to keep our our students safe. Um, and then there's also a piece about funding those policies and making sure that that educators and people in the buildings have what they need to keep um everyone safe related to gun violence. And then I think to Yen Xing's point, it's all of our responsibilities. Um, and so it's 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 the individual schools, it's the district, it's the towns. Um, and so thinking about those relationships and how we can kind of collectively, more holistically, develop a culture of safety. Um, and then kind of as a tangential side note, there is an article at the Acton Town Meeting, which is on May first uh related to firearms. So I I think that it's it's a multi-pronged approach.
Thanks, Leela. Courtney?
Um, yeah, this is a big question, and I will try to answer it strictly from a school committee candidate place and not um any of the other places we could come from. Um, I agree with so much of what's been said, that definitely it is a responsibility of the whole community as far as safety for everyone. Um, I'll echo what Leela said, that as far as school committee, policy and funding are our responsibilities in it. Um, but a question like this really reminds me of why I put my time and efforts where I do so frequently. I really think the community building is a huge part of it, is it's how we take care of each other, it's how we show up for each other. It's how we make space for each other. Um, and it's why those bridges have to be rebuilt. Um, we cannot live in isolation um from members of our community, and certainly as families who are involved in the schools, we have to come back together, spend time together, remind ourselves of our collective goals and show up in that way.
Thanks, Courtney. Tori?
So I've mentioned I have a background of a lot of time in the army. Um, I've had to do this. Um, I've had to protect groups of people, figure out how to handle an active shooter situation, which thankfully did not occur. And as a teacher, I find that when I, one of the first things when I joined my school was I thought about if something awful happened, how would I get kids out safely? My mind is just wired to work that way. It is scary to think that we have to work that way. But as many have already said, it, we all have a role in this. I think probably the piece I would focus on is, one, making sure that schools have the expertise to act in the moment. It is really scary to have a true emergency and to be in charge of other people's lives and have to make the right call. For this reason, I believe building a strong role for a trusted se- uh senior resource officer, school resource officer, you know, is an SRO. Um, building a trusted role for that that school resource officer is important. Um, they're going to be approaching any sort of emergency that God forbid happened from a different perspective than anyone who's never been in that kind of situation before. So I think they're important to have. That said, prevention first is also really the approach we need to focus on. Be ready for the worst, but plan for the best. Plan for a school experience where everybody is excited to come to school, knows they have a way to be successful that day, knows they have that that class or that teacher, that interaction with a schoolmate or whatever it is that they look forward to and are excited about. Everybody should always have something that they feel hopeful and successful so that we don't have these these situations where people start looking for extreme measures. And again, it comes down to that communication, it comes down to community building things that we've all talked about. I think I think we're all unified in this. That's one of the things I love about this group is we have some great ideas, and I think we can do great things for Acton. Thank you.
Thanks, Tori. Jason?
Yeah, so thi- this is, this is a national issue, right? Like, the the Americans and their guns is a is a i- i- extends beyond the 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 boundaries of Acton Boxborough, but um, so but we have to do something locally, right? So we have to provide upward pressure, I think, and that that and that means we need to make sure that of course, yes, our teachers need to be um educated and and our teachers need to be equipped with whatever measures we can give them in order to minimize any sort of one of these tragic situations, right? But we also need to make sure that we're all pushing up to our all our legislation to get this address in a way that's national, right? Because th- there's not one person on this call that can solve this problem, right? We we it's it's a community thing, it's a nation thing, it's it beyond, it's a cultural thing that we we need to just all come together. Um, so I commend anybody that's that's doing this, that's out there trying to get legislation pushed to change policies to um restrict gun use, restrict gun availability, all all that stuff. So um, yeah, I mean, we need to do everything we can to empower our schools to keep our kids safe as much as we can. It's a top priority. Beyond that, we need to just lobby to to change policy.
Thanks, Jason. I I think this is the best we can do with the time that's allowed. I would like to thank all the candidates for joining us and thank everyone that has joined the meeting, who unfortunately we cannot get to all the questions that's being asked. Um, so a a call to everyone, you know, go vote on Election Day. Um, Shran, do you have any closing remarks?
Um, no, I don't. Uh, thank you, Shirley, for a very uh well moderated uh session, and thanks, everyone, particularly our school committee candidates uh for your um willingness to serve our community best of all, everyone, and um yes, please go vote on April twenty-fifth. That's the most important message you share with everyone.
Uh, Shran, there's also a candidate forum um by uh legal women vote voters, right? So.
That's correct. Tomorrow and town hall, and I believe you can also join online. I don't have the online Zoom information available, but you can go to Indian Women Voters website to get that. Uh, and also it will be in person at the town hall tomorrow. Seven, seven o'clock, if you need.
Alrighty.
So Shirley, Shirley, there are a couple of questions came from the audience that was sent directly to me, so I'm gonna compile them uh three or four of them, and I send it to all the candidates, you know, so you have the option of providing any return answers if you want to, or reach out to the person who asked those questions for. Okay.
Alright, so yeah, we will have the meeting recordings made available. Uh, we have a Facebook page and we can send to all the candidate up the uh meeting uh recording has been uploaded. Thanks again, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having us. Good night, all.